Oh yeah, there he is. Yeah, I didn't see him back there. Oh yeah, there he is. Yeah, I didn't see him back there. What's that? I understand now. Okay, sorry about the delay. Uh, with that, let's get the May 27th, 2025 City Planning Commission meeting underway. Item number one is roll call.
Davies.
Here.
McKeown.
Here.
Matthews.
Here.
Bain.
Here.
Fudge.
Here.
Jett.
Here.
Forbes. Whirl. Van Velson.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Current copy of the Open Meetings Act of the state of Nebraska is posted at the back of council chambers on the wall right there. You're free to refer to it at any time. There's also agendas back there if anybody wants to look at one. Item number two, approval of minutes from the meeting held April 22nd, 2025. I trust you all read them intently.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the minute.
Second.
Motion by Van Velson, seconded by Jett, to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion on that matter? No, Michelle, please. Everybody have their little clickers out? What is the X? There's a big red X. That's ominous. And the minutes are approved. Item number three. Folks, it isn't always... It's always entertaining, okay? Let's just put it in. File number three, file number SU 25-008, discussion, consider action on application by Lucinda Hoffman for preliminary and final approval of Swanson second replat located at 2821 Hoover Road in an RL suburban dwelling district on property described as Lot 9 Swanson's addition to North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Judy.
Um, the subdivision will split one lot into two lots in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Sewer is available to service the lot. Water will require a private well and there is no service available through century link. Um, I do show a preliminary and final plat for your approval. Planning staff has no objection to the proposed subdivision. The property is located in a rural subdivision. However, planning staff does not want the prop... does want the property owner to understand that if a separate residence were to be proposed on the newly created lot, the lot will require infrastructure improvements to have access to water and other utilities. Um, I don't think the applicant is here, so I will be happy to try and answer questions if you have any.
Where in the David Fudge is this at?
So, you go out on... It's on Rodeo Road. You go out on Rodeo Road where the road kind of curves up and you're headed to Hershey. It's on the north side of Rodeo Road. Um, there's a fairly good sized subdivision.
A little tiny descending up. That's Rodeo Road that's curving around.
Yep.
Slow arc, okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions, comments, criticisms of the chair at this point?
I move to make a recommendation to approve file number SU 25-008, preliminary and final approval of Swanson second replat.
Second.
Motion by Jett, seconded by... Oh, Davey, sorry. Be there, I deserve some criticism. To make a recommendation that we approve. Any more discussion on that motion? If not, Michelle, please. That is odd.
Very odd.
That system's been squirrely for months.
Oh, I thought I pushed it.
And the recommendation is made to approve.
This will go to city council on June 3rd at 5:30.
Okay, first of two public hearings tonight, uh, is item number four, public hearing, file number CU 25-001, discussion, consider action on application by Central Nebraska Public Power and Irrigation District for conditional use permit to allow dredging operations and commercial sand processing on property located southeast of the city of North Platte in an F1 floodway district and described as part of lots four, five, and six in the east half of section seven, township 13 North, range 29 West. Okay, first of two public hearings tonight, uh, is item number four, public hearing, file number CU twenty five dash zero zero one, discussion, consider action on application by Central Nebraska Public Power and Irrigation District for conditional use permit to allow dredging operations and commercial sand processing on property located southeast of the city of North Platte in an F one floodway district and described as part of lots four, five, and six in the east half of section seven, township thirteen north, range twenty nine west of the sixth prime meridian, and part of lots six and seven in the west half of section eight, township thirteen north, range twenty nine west of the sixth prime meridian, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Judy.
As stated, the applicant is requesting to use the area to process and prepare sediment and sand for removal from the site. Um, Central Nebraska Public Power and Irrigation District utilizes a portion of this, a portion of the sand for internal purposes and has occasionally allowed others to take or purchase the sand. Local demand and internal use is insufficient to manage continual accumulation of sediment. The operation will need a building warehouse in the future, anticipated for twenty six or twenty seven. Current traffic varies depending on CNPPID's operations from two vehicles to twenty plus per day. The new proposed traffic will be approximately twenty to thirty truckloads per day. Um, CNPPID is in the process of placing crushed asphalt surfacing on the road currently used to transport sand. The surfacing on the road will decrease both noise and dust levels in the area. With new road surfacing in place, the applicants believe that increased traffic will not be detrimental to neighboring properties. The new operation will create both direct and indirect employment through suppliers, contractors, and related services. The current property use is similar to the requested new use, and CNPPID has several existing buildings on site. The new proposed use will allow CNPPID to collaborate with an experienced sand processing company that will operate in accordance with best industry standards. The new operation will incorporate dust emission controls that will reduce the overall emissions of sand and gravel. Attached to the review comments is a copy of the justification provided by the applicant and then a couple, um, prop- couple site location maps so that you know where this is located. Planning staff has no objections to the conditional use application. The property is currently used as a mineral extraction site and should have minimal impact on the area and surrounding property owners. The applicant is in the audience if you have any questions.
Okey doke. Uh, this is a public hearing, the first of two tonight, so pay, uh, listen up. I'm only going to read this one time, and these ru- rules will apply to this public hearing and the next. Planning Commission values your input and wants to hear from the audience during the public hearings. Anybody wishing to speak must first be recognized by the chair. Once recognized, please approach the podium, state your name and address. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. Repetitive and excessively long testimony may be ended at the discretion of the chair. Everybody got it? Make sure you're talking here, okay? All right, and with that, uh, is the, where is the applicant on this? Come on up. Name and address, sir.
Good afternoon, uh, Devon Brundage. Uh, business address is three twenty Avenue D, Gothamburg, Nebraska.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to say on this one?
Uh, that, uh, good summary. Uh, the, the site, I'm sure probably many of you are aware, uh, has been in use. Uh, we have dredging operations there currently, have been since nineteen forty. Uh, very critical to operations, extracting the sand before the water gets into our, our canal system is, uh, critical for our, uh, operations. And so, uh, over the years, uh, our ability to mitigate the, the sand and make sure that it's, uh, not piling up and finding, uh, uses and places for us becoming, uh, increasing, increasingly difficult. And so we've been very pleased to have a, a potential partner to help us, uh, find a value add and, and probably bring some economic, uh, value to North Platte at the same time, so.
Any questions for Mister Brundage? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Who's next on this one? Whoop, Gary, hold on a second. I.
Sorry.
That's all right. Come on up, Gary.
Hi. Uh, Gary Pearson, president, North Platte Area Chamber Development Corporation, five oh two South Dewey. Um, the, uh, potential or the partner that signed an agreement, uh, with, uh, Central is the grit group. Uh, we've been working with the company since, uh, the last couple of months. Um, in addition to providing a very valuable and needed services for Central, um, they will also help us, uh, become the first tenant that we have at the industrial rail park and, uh, with the inland port authority. So they'll be marketing, uh, the sand to different customers, uh, throughout a large area, uh, west of us and south of us. And so, um, we've been through a lot of the due diligence with them and, um, the company officials bring a lot of experience to the table. Uh, been in the industry for a long time. They know how to do it right, and we look forward to them being, coming a part of North Platte, Lincoln County.
Okay, any questions for Mister Pearson? Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, come on up.
I'm Rich DeFreeze. I live three thousand six South Hidden Lakes Road and, uh.
What was your last name, sir? I didn't catch it, I'm sorry.
Which part?
Your name.
Rich DeFreeze.
Thank you very much.
F R E E C E.
Thank you.
I want to know what roads you're going to be in going in and going on in this truck traffic.
Judy, can you answer that while I talk?
Might have to have the applicant come up and tell me which road it is. Um, are you going to be going down the Canal Road? Okay, so it's the Canal Road that comes, um, on the maps that you have. There's the Canal Road that comes down here.
Up Canal and then connecting to State Farm.
Well, then you're not.
Listening to the, listening to this fellow here, okay? What, any more, any more testimony, sir?
I have a question?
Yeah.
Yes, I want to know what road. You've gone down the Canal Road, but you call it.
The Canal Road to State Farm and then State Farm to.
You're not going down the Hidden Lakes Road or south, all that.
I'm being told no.
At this time. Correct.
That's what I'm being.
Going down Canal Road to State Farm.
Okay, make sure you stay on it. Lot of crap coming down Hidden Lakes Road.
Anybody else want to testify on this one? Come on up.
Sophia Klein, one thousand three East Fourth.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I actually just had some questions. Um, so the points, that's what was in the paper, that they were going to be dredging at the points, um, which would be like right where our family's land is. I'm just kind of curious if they're switching directions of the river, or if they will be using any of our land for this, or if any of the wildlife will be disturbed on actually any of Golden's property, which would be, it's no longer my grandpa's, it would be under my name now. I didn't get a letter, but my Uncle Bernie did. So I guess we're just kind of curious what that means for our land, or if you'll be using any of it to access any of the points.
They can't use your land. You'd have to be part of the applicant. It is on their property, CNPPID's property, which is right where the existing sand and gravel operation is currently.
In which we've worked with them before, and they've actually ended up doing ponds and stuff for us when they've switched directions of our land. Um, would that be required again if so happens? Because I know when you're judging, it does tend to break down berms along the side of that, and the points aren't huge if you've been out there. I mean, it's not a big land.
I can't answer that question.
Like, would it, like, eventually disintegrate some of our property by digging that, or?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question. I can ask it, though.
Yeah, or what would happen if it did, or if there is any compensation for that for my grandparents.
Okay. Other questions?
But that's, no, that's pretty much our main concern.
Any questions for Sophia? Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else want to testify on this one? What's your question, Mister DeFreeze? Come back up if you would, please, so we can hear you. Sorry. It's hard to hear in the audience from.
So what sand and gravel pit are you talking about? It's not going to be involved, which is already out there to begin with.
Which one isn't going to be involved?
Yeah, you talked about a gravel pit and whatever she did, and we have one on the other side, but now they're filling it up, sand and stuff right there on, behind there.
The one that is currently existing, that is on CNPPID's property currently, is exactly where this one is going to be, is exactly where this project is occurring.
Where you do all the dredging at now, and then you're going to use like the road?
Yes, it's where they're currently dredging now, and then this company will be there to help them haul the sand and gravel out.
Sir.
Yeah, well, I have to ask the lady first.
Well, you can do that.
Do you know that?
I'm sorry.
I said, do you know that? I just want to know.
This is a public hearing, and so.
I understand. Conversation, I'm just talking to him, not you.
Public hearings, you have to address the entire board.
Yep, you have to address the board. You want to have a Q and A with somebody in the audience, you can do that later.
So the one of the pit you're talking about, it's already there to begin with, and that's on that Canal Road.
It is existing, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else want to testify on this one? Go on once. Go on twice.
Excuse me, I'll just clarify, that was years ago. We do have a longstanding relationship with this company, and it was a while ago when they have to, like, if they go through certain parts, they have to do wildlife area, and that's what I was talking about. This wasn't recent. It was a while ago, and I knew they had to mitigate.
Thank you. Okay, now then.
Make the motion with close public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Bane, seconded by Davies to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that matter? No, Michelle, please. Where's that X again? I know it. And the public hearing is now closed. Okay, we're going to talk about this up here now, okay? I do want to call back up Mister, uh, Brundage, if you would, please, sir. Regarding Ms. Klein's question about the. You want to address that real quick?
Yeah, uh, so the operations today, we dredge the, basically the river around the dam. On your, uh, picture, you can see the water in the river. Uh, opera- our operations will not change at all. Today, we dredge that, that area just to keep the sand out of the water. We pile it right there, uh, where the piles are today. The piles will be in the same location that they are today. Uh, nothing changes. The only thing that changes is the addition of the building so that they can process it and take it out. Today, we have loaders, and we do, uh, uh, load it out in trucks. It's with various different, uh, folks at various different times, but again, it very minimal changes at all really from our aspect, so.
Okay.
This is not creating a new pit. This is not starting a new pit. This is dredging in front of the diversion out of the river from sand sediment that comes downstream.
It, it is, it is not very glamorous. Uh, we, uh, twenty, twenty-four hours a day, uh, um, for a lot of the summer, we, we dredge this area of the, of the river and pile it up. And if we don't do that, the sand gets into the, into the, uh, uh, canal, and that's, that's no good for us. And so, uh, if we, uh, again, we've been doing this since, since nineteen forty in the same place, same pit, and we'll do it for the next hundred years.
But it's not creating another pit. It's not destroying any topicals.
Nope, not changing anything.
Any other questions at this point? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions for Judy?
I mean, in, in my layman's terms, um, so basically, they're just going to take the same sediment that they've been taking out. It's just going to be more commercially processed and probably taken out by more trucks.
That is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
So whoever decides to do that, there's two versions of motions here. There's a motion to approve and a motion to deny. You'd have to cite at least. Well.
You don't have to add anything in the gray area if you don't want to, but you do need to read the, based on the following factual findings.
Okay.
I move that we find the request for a conditional use permit to allow dredging operations and commercial sand processing located in section seven dash thirteen dash twenty-nine and section eight dash thirteen dash twenty-nine southeast of the city of North Platte meets the minimum standards stated in the North Platte Code of Ordinance, section one five six dot three two two, and approve and grant the conditional use permit requested with the condition that all elements of the application are complied with based on the following findings. The use shall conform to all applicable ordinances, laws, and regulations of the governmental jurisdiction. The use shall have adequate water, sewer, and drainage facilities. Ingress and egress shall be so designed to minimize traffic congestion on, in the public streets. The use shall, in all other aspects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. The use shall be in harmony with the character of the area and the most appropriate use of the land. Any additional? Yeah, that's it.
Nope.
There's a motion on the floor.
I motion the second.
Motion by Davies, seconded by Matthews to recommend approval. Any more discussion on this one? Bring up the red X. And the recommendation for approval is made.
This will go on to the city council agenda for June third, and it will also be a public hearing, so you are welcome to attend and voice your opinions there also.
Okey doke. Uh, items number five and six are related, uh, so we're going to open the public hearing on them simultaneously. So I'm going to read both items, uh, into the record at this point, okay? So item number five is a public hearing, file number AM twenty-five dash zero zero, uh, zero zero four, discussion, consider action on application by C and T Kuchera LLC and Jason and Kayla Jensen purchaser for an amendment to the city of North Platte future land use map, amending certain land from residential low density, single family to public quasi-public on property located at eight oh one, eight oh se- through eight oh seven South Elm Street and described as lots one through four, Kuchera's second centennial addition to North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Item number six is a public hearing as well. File number Z two five dash zero zero six, discussion, consider action on application by C and T Kuchera LLC owner and Jason and Kayla Jensen purchaser to rezone certain lands from R one dwelling district to an H one hospital district on property located at eight oh one through eight oh seven South Elm Street and described as lots one through four, Kuchera's second centennial addition to North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Judy.
Okay, and you should have the review comments for both the amendment to the land use map and the rezoning. Um, in order to rezone the property, it's the duty of the planning commission to ensure that the rezoning is in conformance with the current comprehensive plan. The request for the amendment has been submitted in conjunction with the rezoning. The applicants are requesting the amendment to allow the change in zoning. Planning staff has no objections to the amendment. The parcel is abutting both residential and public quasi-public land use, so amending the land use to allow the property to develop as commercial property should not be a detriment to the surrounding property owners. Um, with the rezoning, the applicant, um, you should have attached there a copy of the zoning map, current zoning map, and then also a justification provided by the applicant, a proposed site plan if the zoning were to come to fruition, and then attached are, um, some letters of support. The applicant is requesting the zone change to construct and operate a high-end full-service gym and fitness center with wellness-focused amenities. The applicants anticipate the traffic flow will remain consistent with other nearby medical and wellness facilities. They are planning ample onsite parking to avoid an impact to adjacent residential streets. The project will create jobs in fitness management, childcare, and maintenance. The proposed gym will be complimentary addition that enhances the community health ecosystem without duplicating existing offerings. Planning staff again has no objections to the rezoning if the amendment has been approved. The property is located in an area surrounded by residential and commercial hospital-type uses. The project is located north of the existing Jehovah's Witness Church and directly west of Maple Park Dental. The addition of new business in the area will increase traffic. However, the applicant is providing more than adequate parking for the business. Um, also, you were provided a, um, petition that was emailed out, I believe, on Friday, so hopefully all of you received that. And then, um, also, I provided you with a few maps, um, just to give you a general idea of location of property owners, and then along with that, um, we do need to remember that this is a rezoning, so I know we'll focus a lot on what they're proposing as a use, but you do also need to remember as planning commission that there are different uses that if you rezone this and something were to happen, and the current proposed po- project would maybe fall apart, that if this did get rezoned, that these other uses listed on the, um, in the ordinance that I provided could possibly locate there in the future. Um, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to help. The applicants are in the audience.
Okey doke, this is also a public hearing, uh, same rule. Okey doke, this is also a public hearing. Same rules that I read in earlier apply. Please remember you're talking to us. If there's questions that need asked, we'll do the best to ask them of the people that we can on your behalf, but keep your testimony focused on us, please. I'm going to invite the applicants up if they would like to start the presentation and then we'll kind of go from there, okay?
I have a couple of other letters. Can I hand those to you?
Yeah, sure. Name and addresses, please.
Uh, Jason and Kayla Jensen, eleven twenty Tanner Court.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, ready? Good evening and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We are Jason and Kayla Jensen, the owners of Enzo Athletic Performance, a family-oriented, small business built on Christian values, committed to the health and well-being of our community. We're here to request the rezoning of eight oh one to eight oh seven South Elm, from R one to H one. Our goal is to build a state-of-the-art space focused on wellness, youth development and family fitness. We've been growing, we've been a growing part of this community for the past eleven years, starting with our business. In two thousand fourteen, we had only fifteen hundred square feet and thirty-five members. After two years, we bought and renovated our current space, a building that had sat empty and was considered an eyesore for more than five years. Today, we've grown to serve two hundred and forty members ranging from six to seventy years old. We provide more than just workouts. We offer structured fitness, nutrition, coaching, accountability, youth development, and soon onsite child services. We're actively involved in the community as a gym. Recently, we were proud to match all the registrations for the Shamrock Shuffle Fund Run, supporting the North Platte Children's Museum, and last holiday season, we participated in a friendly competition with other local gyms for Grace Ministry's Food Pantry. We're asking to rezone these lots to allow us to build a new space that meets our growing needs, combating rising chronic disease and helping families make health a priority. This new space will be six to seven thousand square feet in size, which provides room for us to run simultaneous classes for kids and adults, allowing entire families to work out and train at the same time. Offer expanded child services, especially for working parents, and enhance the long-term wellness of North Platte. These lots have sat vacant for years, priced in a range that makes them unattractive for standard residential development. We paid close to asking price because we see the long-term community value this location can offer. Our peak hours are five thirty to seven AM, nine to ten AM, and four thirty to seven, four thirty to seven thirty PM, in which, based on our current car count, we'll average about fifteen cars in the lot at any given time. We will have more than enough onsite parking exceeding the city requirements for the relatively small influx of cars that will be onsite at one time. We do not plan to operate as a twenty-four-seven facility. There will be no late-night traffic and our class-based system spreads ta- traffic naturally throughout the day. We're committed to making this space architecturally consistent with both healthcare buildings and residential homes, a natural extension of the existing medical corridor, and a visual buffer between commercial activity and neighborhood homes. We will also intentionally design the building layout, lighting and landscaping to ensure seamless fit with the surrounding area. We understand that the rezoning of these lots and the construction of our building will bring concerns and we want to be empathetic and proactive. We want to address these concerns that anybody may have and assure that we have thoughtful plans in place to mitigate them. The first considerations we have made include traffic, parking and lighting. We expect a modest increase in traffic during class windows, but not continuous or disruptive. We expect most of the traffic to come from Philip Street. We will exceed the city's parking requirements and use shielded lighting to prevent light pollution. Our layout will avoid any impact on neighboring driveways or yards. Our gym operates with structured classes, will not operate with twenty-four-seven access or drop-in foot traffic. We close by ten PM. We also acknowledge that they may be concerned about the change in the character of the neighborhood. We plan to preserve the character of the neighborhood by designing the building to blend in, not stand out. This is not a commercial strip mall. It's a purpose-built wellness space that will enhance the community health and value of the area. Approving this rezoning enables us to have a positive impact on our community. We can hire more trainers, coaches and support staff, offer more youth programs not found anywhere else in town, and create a space where entire families can train together. This isn't just about our business. It's about raising the standard of health in North Platte. Now, before I close, I want to leave you with a quote from one of our members.
As a mom of three, to help paint a picture of what kind of neighborhood we will be for this area, because I understand that the mission of the planning and development team is to ensure high-quality development and protect the general welfare of the community. Personally, I think that we are the best option for a commercial neighbor that you will find. If you come to Enzo, you may be surprised who you all might bump into in any given class, because we truly are a varied bunch. You may bump into your child's favorite teacher, the owner of one of your favorite local small businesses, a healthcare professional who has impacted your life, or a law, local law off, officer. You might meet Dee, a retired woman best known for her dancing and words of encouragement. And if you do almost, if you do, if, if, if you do, you almost certainly won't leave without the biggest hug, hug you've ever had. You'll find young parents taking time to work to improve their lives so that they can be fully present for their kids. Likewise, you'll see grandparents and great-grandparents working to give their bodies what they need to keep up with the grandkids. If you stay and watch, you'll hear countless positive words and passing between people who are, were at one point strangers.
Thank you. I could not do that.
We respectfully ask for your support in rezoning these lots to H one so that we can move forward with that space that serves people of North Platte across generations, fits with permitted uses of H one in the area, and elevates the value and vibrancy of our community. With that being said, we are under the understanding that some members of the community have signed a petition against the rezoning of this property. And I'm sure that you are, you may not already know, but of these seventy signatures, only eleven of them are within the three hundred-foot radius that is asked by the city. Seven signatures within that radius are not from the owners and multiple other signatures from as far as a mile and a half away. The petition also stated that rezoning would in fact lower property values, which is an assumption, not a fact. With that being said, I have a couple of questions for people of the board, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, Nelson, um, what are residential lots of this size being sold for in North Platte?
Yeah, he, he can't answer that because he has to abstain from the discussion tonight. So, yeah.
Okay, so you can't, okay.
Yeah.
So on the, on the fact of property values going down, so I will, I'll, let me go back to the other one. Residential lots in this town, from my research, are selling anywhere from twenty to forty thousand dollars on the high end. We paid fifty thousand dollars per lot for these, and there's much better locations for those lower prices. And so.
They're priced for a commercial lot.
They're priced for a commercial lot.
And multiple people have tried buying them at a lower rate and it's not going to happen.
Um, Jeff Bain, in your time as a real estate appraiser, what have you seen as far as real estate values going up or down or saying same next to commercial spaces?
Can I answer it or am I giving up?
Yeah, go, go ready.
Lucky me, I have conflict.
One, one item usually doesn't affect a neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, that is all that we have.
Okay, any questions for the Bain, or for Jason and Kayla right now? Sure, we may have some later. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, show of hands, who wants to come up and talk about this one so I can kind of work through the room? Tom, come on, you, okay, as well? Okay, there. Okay, that gets me started.
Well, thank you. Tom Werble, eight sixteen South Elm. We're just down the street a little bit from the proposed gym, uh, which could be a Hillaport. It could be a restaurant. It could be a cremation facility. It could be metal and dental offices. Those are all permitted uses in H one zoning, as has been pointed out by Judy. Our objection isn't necessarily that we don't like the Jensons at all or our neighbor, but this has been our plan to own a house there in the supposition that it would be a residential area. Those lots, excuse me, when they were subdivided originally and there were covenants on the property and the covenant said those lots would be residential only with a garage. Now we're faced with the idea that these could become a commercial property has already been indicated with traffic coming in and out of there. All you have to do is go over to Maple Park Dentistry. They've had parking problems up and down that street since they built that dental clinic. They're working on getting those solved, which is to their credit. But our concern is that we have a lot of children in the area. We have a, a family down the street has seven kids and their traffic's going to move in, a lot of traffic's going to go through towards Philip, but a lot of it's not going to go towards Philip. It's going to go towards E Street. So there's still going to be a danger to the kids in the area. Furthermore, we have quite an investment as homeowners and our properties are ready that we have invested in in anticipation that the area would stay like it is. It's reasonable to assume when you buy a property and it's zoned across the street for residential, that you could expect it to stay that way. I understand the argument and I appreciate the Jensen's desire to build something. There are going to be properties available very soon across North Platte of developments that are being built. Some of them are along Philip Avenue. There'd be commercial properties available over there. To me, it makes no sense to set it in the middle of a residential area, frankly. And I don't understand the thought about it and, and I'm not really particularly concerned about Jensen's in the sense that they're not responsible people. I'm worried about the fact that if, as Judy pointed out, this, this venture doesn't succeed or they decide to move someplace else, they sell the property and the use is converted to something that I've already mentioned in my letter to you. I did have seventy people sign a petition against this, which you've received a copy of. I personally went up and down the street and I know that I got more than eleven people that live in the area. Two people signed. I have seven kids. Do you count that as just two people or you count it as nine? There's a question to answer. That, so I'm particularly concerned about this being a lot of extra traffic that we've had not in the past. And I think that to assert that this is not going to have an impact there is naive at, at a minimum. So I think there's other people here would like to speak. I may ask to come up again, but is there any questions that you have for me personally?
That's my line. Any questions for Mr. Werble? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
And just so you know, we were provided a, a list of possible uses for H one by Judy before the meeting tonight.
Well, I was glad I brought that to her attention.
Think I saw right back here in the back. Come on up.
I'm Jean Gilpin. I live at eight ten South Elm Street, and then I do own a rental property, seven oh two South Maple. And I'm also concerned with the, the, the traffic that this is going to cause coming from Elm onto Philip and vice versa, Philip to Elm. And I did go around and have people sign. I know it was out of the three hundred radius, but it's people that do drive down Elm Street to get onto Philip. And it is going to create, we do have families with kids and that's a safety issue to consider also. Plus the noise. We live in a low residential area. It's pretty much quiet elderly people and people with families. So that is a concern that I, I do have. And I'm, you know, I don't know the Jensen's from Adam and it sounds like a wonderful facility, but I don't think our residential area is really a good fit for that.
Any questions for Skillpin?
Thank you.
Of course. Think I saw, did you put your hand up? Come on up.
I'm Joyce McCray. I live at eight oh eight South Elm. Um, I have three things. I don't care if it's the Jensen's building a gym or whatever, but I think the city, the precedent, if you approve this, anyone could come to you in any open residential lot. If you have a lot across the street from your house, it could be approved and it's a commercial lot. So it sets a precedent of turning residential areas into commercial areas that were never meant to be that way. The second thing, I don't know if, if Mr. Jet is not able to vote on this, but since his company sold the property, I think he should be recu- not allowed. The third thing is, the reason those lots have not sold for years is because Mrs. Peaks, who is Mr. Kassera's daughter, stated that they wouldn't be sold for less than fifty thousand dollars and that's why they've never sold. She won't take anything less than that money. And Charlie, her dad, never intended for that area to be anything but residential. We've known him for years before he passed and that was never his plan for that land to be used for a commercial property. He wanted housing that was reasonable and efficient. And that's what we'd like it to stay.
Any questions for? Um, just for the record, before we go any further, Mr. Jet is recusing himself from this vote as well as Mr. Davies. Mr. Steele, I think you were next.
Um, Court Steele, eleven sixteen West Fourth. Um, I just wanted to speak a couple of minutes on behalf of Jason and Kayla. Um, I started seeing them as soon as I moved back in twenty twenty and they helped me with a lot of different things from, like they said, nutrition, all the way to getting some help and from way, one way or to another, I've, I've found my, myself back over there and they've, they've been a great asset to the community and I know a lot of people have, in that neighborhood, I've said that, but one other or shown their displeasure for, for having that, but this wouldn't be a I, I don't think that's a great example to use when it comes to having a, just some residential lot. There are other commercial properties over there that I think would that, that I've, have been there for a long time and have added a lot of value to those, to the area and I, I also am a big believer in, I really don't love driving around town and seeing empty lots. I think we need to let these companies grow. Uh, they have started from practically nothing, helping a lot of my, uh, they started when I was in high school. And they've, they have had a great track record of allowing high schoolers at first and then they've grown to the six to seventy and, and have really grown from the bottom up. And, and I think we should not be starting the, the, starting the downward or, North Platte's doing a lot of great things and I don't think one of them should be us trying to limit a, a homegrown business from continuing to grow. It's a, again, they're, they're awesome people. They're not lying when they say that, uh, that's one of the reasons why I decided to rejoin after a, a year or two. I, we, we have a, I have a young kid trying to do a lot of those things that they're talking about, trying to get toward my health and I can be very active with my son. So it's a, it's a very, it's a very good environment, very positive and they're amazing people too. And, and they have built a really good community in, inside that gym. So those are just a couple of things that I wanted to mention to, to kind of be, be for this, this development, so.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Steele? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Come on up. Did I see somebody's hand go up over here too? Okay, right over there. Thank you. I'll get to you in just a second.
My name is Bruce Peterson. I live at eight oh six South Elm. And I've lived there for forty-one years. And I bought the house originally from Charlie. And Charlie stated that I wanted to buy one of them lots across the street and he told me that they would be houses eventually. Now I have nine grandchildren across this, living across the street from this. And my grandchildren are out riding their bikes and stuff up and down this street and with all this extra traffic and stuff. And with all this extra traffic and stuff, where's that going to leave us? And then the other question I got is how many of these lots are they going to actually use? Are they going to use all four of these lots? Are they going to sell off two of these lots? If they sell off any of these lots, what other kind of business are we going to wind up? So them are my questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Peters? Oh, thank you, sir. Come on up.
Hello, um, Latisha Lovett, 1501 West A Street here in town. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Uh, it's pretty obvious that this topic has both emotional and practical concerns. I know change can be difficult, especially when it touches homes and neighborhoods and communities, but I believe that what is being proposed can add real value to this community. Physically, economically and socially. It isn't just a business venture. It's a purpose-driven investment in health, wellness and connection. And our vision, vision is to build a top-tier gym facility, as was stated, that doesn't just serve athletes, but supports families, professionals, seniors and youth alike. This space encourages movement, belonging and long-term wellbeing. So you might support the Jensen's. You might be saying, oh, that's a great vision, we support their mission, but build it somewhere else. Um, I can assure you that we wouldn't be here tonight if uh, that option had been explored, hadn't been explored very, very, very thoroughly. And um, doors had been opened and closed and um, it was just a very thoughtful and very thorough decision for over five plus years now. Many options had been considered. And finally, through great examination and deliberation, this property is the ideal location. It's access, accessible, it's visible and perfectly positioned to serve the surrounding area. By repurposing these four lots, we're not disturbing a quiet, quiet street. We're revitalizing a corner of the neighborhood in a way that brings people together. As a resident here in North Platte, I can understand change and I mean, it's been an open lot for a long time and you could call that a view. I mean, the residents there and I don't deny that, but um, things are going to fill up. Um, and it, it's important that we choose wisely and decide, decide together to grow and what's best. Living at, living in a, in a city is, is the trade-off for that. I mean, you just, that's what we signed up for. These areas are going to fill up. If you're going to be home next to homes or businesses or um, schools, you're going to be surrounded by things. That's the trade-off unless you live um, elsewhere. So with the surrounding other commercial buildings, um, again, I just restate that this is the ideal location for this and it flows well with those businesses and the residential areas will not be disturbed. It's not completely about building a gym. It's about building something with you. It's a, a place where you can take your kids for their first training session, where your neighbor finds motivation to get stronger after surgery, where we can all get a little better together. And I hope you'll join us in making this vision a reality and a location that has been very carefully selected with much intention and um, consideration for the residents nearby.
Any questions for Ms. Lovett? Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else on this one? Come on up.
Hello, I'm, I'm Maddie Krebs. I live at 3665 North Homestead Road. Sorry, I have to read mine. Um, it's hard to put into words just exactly how much Jason and Kayla and the Enzo business means to so many people in this community. Enzo is not some big box commercial business coming in trying to take advantage of the North Platte dollar. This gym and these people are invested in our community, the future of it, the hu, the health of it and the sustainability of it. And they have made a difference in so many people's lives already. Um, if they are able to create a bigger facility in a centralized location, they will help affect so many more people in the town of North Platte. I am a North Platte native and I've lived here since I was 12 years old. I've watched many businesses go in and out of this town, people who were for them and against them all at the time. And while I understand that traffic may be the main issue, um, I can ensure the people of the neighborhood that Jason and Kayla are easy to work with, want the best for everyone in their lives and will make accommodations so that their business can not only succeed, but the neighborhood is happy and healthy as well. And they will do their absolute best to keep the neighborhood a place that people still love to live in. They have two children of their own and would never create something that would endanger children in the area. I can guarantee you they have done their research and they will ensure us that safety is a number one priority. North Platte is growing and improving every day. Eventually this property is going to sell. Um, and it's going to be sold to someone. It's surrounded by other businesses already. If it stays residential priced the way that it is, there's a chance that the only people who can afford to build residentially are the ones who may develop it into apartment buildings, low-income housing or many other things that could be done residentially. If you rezone this area for commercial, you know exactly who's going into it right now and what they want to do with it. They are people that want the best for this community and all of the people in it. They are committed to serving North Platte for the long term. This is not a 10-year business and then they're out and selling to someone else. Um, if you pass on the opportunity to allow these people to develop this land as a business that you already know and is already succeeding and giving back to North Platte and willing to improve our community, then you're giving the chance to someone else that you don't know to possibly come into our town who doesn't understand it. They may develop this property into something that you do not want. Um, I hope that you will consider rezoning this property to allow them to build the business that is not only going, going to better North Platte, but all the people in it.
Thank you, any questions from Scrubs? Thank you. A- anybody else? Give me just a second to make sure everybody's had a chance. I will come back to you, I promise you. Come on up.
My name's Tom McCraw. I live at eight oh eight South Elm. We've lived here most of my life after retiring from the railroad. We traveled and then lived in Salt Lake City in Southern Utah and decided to move back home. When we bought this property, it was the intent I asked about the, the area across the street was residential. Retired, I've been working in a physical education. I taught school, I worked for the railroad here for 30 years. I don't want to be in a neighborhood with a lot of traffic. And secondly, this gym that they want to build, I don't think it's necessary. I go to the rec center every morning almost, at least five days a week. I work out in there. I never see more than two or three people in the gym part of weight rooms in the mornings. I don't know when they're all working out, but I don't think it's being used to its fullest. And I don't think this is necessary in our neighborhood. There's plenty of other lots that aren't in residential areas. When we bought this place, we were told it was residential and we assumed it would stay that way. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. McCraw? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else, first time out? I haven't forgotten you. Come on up. I'm going to go through everybody that's gone, okay? Or hasn't gone yet. Go ahead.
Sandra Werble, eight 16 South Elm. So we live across from the property. My concern is that the Jensen's stated that their business is growing and they're up to 200 and some. Well, that's a lot of people to be going in and out of the building across the street. And the parking um, that's on the plan is enough for, I think it was 68 cars and then parking in the back. I think there were eight along the alley. So um, I assume if they built there, they would continue to grow, which means more than 200 and some people there in a day. So that's my concern.
Any questions? Thank you. Anybody else new that hasn't gone yet? In the back, come on up.
Brian Plank, six 18 South Maple. A couple of things, I think we have enough gyms in North Platte. It's no reflection on the Jensen's. Um, this was zoned residential, it should stay residential. We don't know what kind of building they might put up. It's all brick houses on the west side of Elm. Beautiful homes. Everybody's been paying taxes there for 25 years. They want to keep it a quiet neighborhood and I want to keep it a quiet neighborhood also.
Any questions for Mr. Plank? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate your time. Anybody else? All right. One more shot, come on up. Remind us your name again, I got it written down.
My name's Bruce Peterson. I live at eight oh six South Elm. Exactly 12 years ago, we went through the very same thing. And it was deemed then to stay residential. What has changed since then? Why can it stay residential? Residential belongs in residential, commercial belongs in commercial. And that's my way of thinking. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry to make you wait through a few people. Did you want another shot?
I do.
Come on up.
I would just like Judy to clarify what Maddie said about what could, what else could be built on those lots because she said apartment buildings or other things. And when you and I corresponded, you told me also that it can be residential, single-family homes on those lots. So I'd like that everyone to know that that's corrected what she said because that kind of building won't be allowed.
So in a single family, which is what it is currently zoned as, as an R1 residential district, it's suited for single-family residences. Now, a couple of years ago, we did allow for ADUs. So you can put an accessory dwelling unit on there, but that's it, single-family right now currently. Now, if they do change the rezoning, you guys have the list of things that could possibly go in there if you do change it to an H1. But yes, right now, they could not put apartment, an apartment complex there because it is an R1. They would have to change it to a R3 district in order to put an apartment on there.
Okay, anybody else want to testify on this one? Last shot.
Thank you, this is Tom Werble again, eight 16 South Elm. Just want to point out that we've had a number of people in the area express a concern about this facility. The people that are speaking in favor of it don't live in the area of the facility. To me, that's a slam dunk. I don't understand why there should be a question, frankly. That's a comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to talk that's new? Last shot.
They've spent a lot of money on a new facility out there by the old rec center, right? City is. Why do you want competition? I don't understand that. You've got to, that's going to be state of the art from what I heard as a physical education facility. I don't think we need any more than that.
Thank you. That was Mr. McCraw, right? Thank you. In the back.
Hi, Teresa Cox, four two eight one North Homestead Road. I've known Kayla and Jason before they even started the gym. Here in North Platte, worked out with them when it belonged to somebody else. Then they took over the gym, got married and um, our family has pretty much benefited from the gym. We've used the rec center too. And I am thrilled that the rec center went through and you know, we're building the pool to better for the school and swim meets and things like that because that is needed for North Platte. But so is um, Enzo. I personally enjoy going to Enzo because of the gym community, the family that we have there. And um, I, and all I can say is that, and, and I understand the concern with residential, but everybody is very responsible. Could something happen? Yes, it could happen anywhere in town. I just want you to look at uh, like they said, we have people there, very young to very old, help each other out all the time. The rec center is going to be there for everybody, along with the other gyms in town. You know, don't just say no just because it's another gym in town, I guess.
Thank you. Any questions? Okie dokie, anybody else new want to talk on this one? Come on up.
Donna Tryon, eight 20 South Bryan. I don't really have any skin in the game one way or the other. I just have a question. If this gets changed to H dash one hospital, does that then open the door for them to become property tax exempt? I just.
No, because they're not for, they're not a not-for-profit facility.
Okay, but if the zoning is changed and that doesn't, if this doesn't, project doesn't go through, does it still open the door for another medical?
If, if, if a nonprofit medical facility built there, then that would be, yes.
And they could with an H1, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
I don't want properties going off the tax rolls anymore than what we've already got going on, if you know what I mean. Thank you.
All right, anybody else new on this one? Going once? Going twice?
Should we close public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Bain, second by McCune to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that? No. Yeah. So you're, everybody's abstaining on the vote, better abstain from this too. So there'll be five. Yep. Okay. And the public hearing is now closed. All right. We're going to talk about this up here. Discussion. Or any questions from the applicants who are still here?
Somewhere along the line, there's a lot of discussion, but there was covenants mentioned?
I asked that question to Judy because the, the, the petition referenced covenants, that, that, the, there was covenants on land to prevent it from being anything else. So I asked the question, what did you two find?
I didn't find anything. I did look at the register of deeds to see if I could see if there was anything on file for these particular properties. There may be something old, but I did not find anything with the resources that I had to look. But the other thing, and please bill step in if I'm incorrect, the city does not enforce covenants. So any covenant that is put on a piece of property is not something that we enforce. Covenants are enforced by the current property owners that are under the covenants or typically an HOA, Homeowners Association or something like that. Because a covenant, honestly, that would really stifle the city if there was an area that we needed to develop, if there was a covenants on there and it would, it would have a problem with us, so we don't enforce those and that's by state statute, correct?
Yeah, and, and Judy's right. So um, covenants are a private matter, zoning is a public matter. So zoning is for the city to enforce, covenants are for private parties to enforce. So the question with the covenant always becomes who has the right to enforce it? If, if they are out there, I, I personally, I didn't get a chance to look and see whether there were covenants here or not because I didn't feel like it was all that um, important to the planning commission's uh, consideration. So that's more for the private parties to worry about.
What about deed restrictions? If somebody had placed, can they put a deed restriction on this? From back when?
Could they? Certainly, and so that, that would be something I, again, that'd be more of a private matter. It, it would come up as part of closing with the title company would be my guess.
Other questions?
How long ago was the H1?
rezoning for both sides of South Maple?
Oh gosh, it was prior to two thousand and twelve, because in two thousand and twelve, we had an application for the same property to rezone. And so there was already H-one on Maple. Boy, I'd have to go back and look for sure, but it was prior to two thousand and twelve, I would guess, two thousand and eight, somewhere in there?
Ten years, twenty years maybe, almost?
Yep.
So my question then becomes, it's been a long time, it's been a slow development, but is it still that residential? The other two lots south of the proposed rezoning are taken up by a parking lot and a church. And it seems like that from the east side of South Elm, across to the east side of South Maple, would look to me like an not a residential area at this point. Now, some of it's vacant, I mean, that's true, but I don't know that there's any compelling reason why we couldn't continue with that rezoning to, it's adjacent to a H-one zone now.
One of the comments too was that it couldn't be multifamily. But someone, an entity could come in and purchase those lots and request the rezoning to a multifamily, correct?
They could.
Just like it's being requested now.
Yes, they could.
So as long as those lots are vacant, it, there could be any request to do anything on it, correct? So this way, at least it would be controlled under the H-one?
Correct.
If we, if we change it, okay.
The biggest difference I see is that they're still residential on the west side of Elm Street, back to Mr. Glenn's conversation. On Maple Street, you have it on both sides.
I think, I printed a color map of which Kurt's got right now. I think you've essentially got a H-one wedge that goes from the alley between Maple and what's that street, straight east of?
Maple?
Yeah.
Ash.
And then basically, you've got it, the other boundary is the alley between Elm and
Maple.
Maple, right. So basically, you've got this wedge that goes right through there that, I'm not quite sure what the origins of that are, but it sure exists.
The origins of that, I can tell you, that property right on South Maple was owned by a church. And it was stayed vacant for quite some time. And then they decided to subdivide that property and sell it off. That's how it became H-one. I mean, that's just the history of how that piece became H-one, because it was all owned by one entity.
Questions?
So I have another question. A ways back, we, or a while back, I should say, we considered a property with a, a special use where it was for that use as being proposed. Is that not an option for this property?
This is a rezoning, so what you're referring to is probably a conditional use permit. So there's a difference between rezoning and conditional uses. With a rezoning, once you rezone it, then you're opening it up to anything that is allowed in that zoning, plus conditional uses. With a conditional use permit, then you have the ability to say, okay, this is the particular project, this is what you're doing, and we're going to add these conditions on to that. That's different than the case here. So if you rezone this, you can't go back to this zoning regulation and say, okay, I want to rezone it to an H-one, but I'm only going to allow this use, this use, and this use. That's already been decided. So if you do an H-one, you're potentially allowing whatever uses are allowed in that H-one.
Would a, a gym, this use be a allowable conditional use in the residential district?
No.
So that's why the whole rezone thing has to come up?
Correct.
So the only, lonely zoning you could do this in would be a B zoning or an H zoning?
Commercial, yeah, a commercial zoning, a H zoning, or an industrial zoning would allow any of those.
Well, we certainly don't want industrial right there.
As far as the option, it's the best option to keep it calm. You know, it's going to increase traffic, and that's all I see is the reduction to the entire neighborhood would be traffic. Everything else, the aesthetics is going to be fine. I think the use is going to be fine. As far as parking, I think they add the parking. If you look at the site plan, the site plan takes up all four lots. Fronts back with adequate parking, and they'll run until ten at night, from eight in the morning. You have people that are sporadic all day, you have morning, you have night. I don't think that they'll ever fill the parking, I think you have adequate parking, but that's all behind, beyond the issue. So the current zoning is
R-one.
R-one, and the future land use map is R-one.
Correct.
Jason, Kayla, can I ask you a follow-up question? Come on up, please. What, what time of the day are you guys the busiest in your, so you'd six to six A, the first session runs at five thirty? And then when's the second session?
Nine AM.
Nine AM, and when's the, is it, and then it jumps to four thirty?
So we have a noon as well, it's not very busy, and then four thirty and five thirty.
Okay. And so which, which of those are the busiest right now?
Five thirty AM, nine AM, and four thirty.
Okay, those are your heaviest traffic times? And how many participants right now are in those times?
So our, our class capacity is twenty-five, and we average eighteen to twenty people.
Okay. You were trying to get my attention earlier to show me something, I wanted to let you do that, so.
Yeah, so if you guys are looking for any of the covenants, which I, I found out were irrelevant for rezoning, but we do have all the covenants. And what was, like, the covenants that were waived? So in nineteen eighty-nine, he waived the covenants that limits the land to structures for dwelling and.
He who, Kayla, I'm sorry?
Uh, Charles Cussera.
Okay.
So we did review all the covenants to see like what his plan was, and it was very clear, his original plan, and then he waived the covenants that were put on there.
Okay. Any other questions for Jason and Kayla? Thank you very much. Okay, so you have two issues here. The first one on the table is a future land use map alteration. So, and then there's a second one behind it, that is a zoning change request. We've been advised at this point by Bill to go ahead and take them both up. Because again, we are not the final authority on this, we make a recommendation to the council, and the council will be, make the final decision on this. Everybody clear with that? So one way or the other, this will be on the council agenda June third, unless something happens where between now and then, where the applicant would withdraw the application. So council will hear this on June third with a recommendation, one way or the other, from us. Everybody clear? Any more discussion? Not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to make a recommendation to approve file number Z-two-five dash zero zero six.
Whoop.
You gotta do the amendment first.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, you're on the wrong one.
Okay. Okay, I move to make a recommendation to approve file number AM-two-five dash zero zero four, an amendment to the city of North Platt future land use map. Amending certain land from residential low density, single-family to public quasi-public on property located at eight oh one dash eight oh seven South Elm Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Matthew, seconded by Van Velson to make a recommendation to recommend, recommend the future land use map be changed. Any further discussion on that? Not? There's the big X. Four to one.
Okay, this will go to council with a positive recommendation.
Alright, so then item number
Six.
Six, sorry, I've lost my agenda, is the rezoning request. Yes, for the record, Jet and Davies both abstained. Thank you, Bill. This next item is the rezoning. Oh, there's my agenda. Any discussion on that one? If not, there's, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to make a recommendation to approve file number Z-two-five dash zero zero six to rezone certain land from an R-one dwelling district to an H-one hospital district on property located at eight oh one dash eight oh seven South Elm Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Matthew, seconded by Bain to recommend approval of the rezoning. Any more discussion on this one? Not? What was that?
I don't know.
And the motion is approved, four to one, but again, Davies and Jet abstaining.
This also will go to city council on June third at five thirty. The city council does do a public hearing just the same, so you're all welcome to attend and speak there also.
Thank you all for your input tonight, we appreciate it. Item number seven, discuss and consider changing the June twenty-fourth, twenty-five planning commission meeting date and time. Uh, June twenty-fourth is prime rib sandwich feed.
So you've got a couple of options. I did talk to the mayor, you could do June seventeenth, which is a Tuesday, but that would probably, we would probably want to do it early, like four thirty, so that we can be done before city council. Or we could do Monday, the, what would that be, the sixteenth? If you want to do a Monday at five thirty, or I guess you guys could give me an option of what day you want to do it.
Tuesday's the Buffalo Bill golf classic.
Tuesday the seventeenth?
And we do have something already for that meeting, correct?
I do have at least one agenda item, possibly three. So, I mean, you can do it Tuesday, you can do it Monday, you can do it Wednesday, but I know Wednesday, you're really getting into Nebraska land days, so I would probably do it Monday, it's gonna,
I'm out either day, so it doesn't matter to me.
I'm probably not going to be able to make it that week either.
The week of the, the, you'd be, seven, sixteen, seventeen?
Yes.
I'm just out that Monday and Tuesdays.
We could do Monday before the regular meeting, which would push us back to the twenty-third.
The se-
So June twenty-third?
Yeah, we could do that. At one no, got a couple of yeses.
Do the twenty-third.
The seventeenth, you said was out?
Well, the seventeenth, I mean, you could do, but we've got several people saying that they can't be there.
And the city council.
And the city council, so I mean, we'd have to hurry and get out of the way.
We don't want to do that.
I'm good with the twenty-third, if you, we.
I see Kurt saying no.
I'm up. I think I'm okay on that.
We've only got one real no.
Yeah, I should be back by the Monday.
Oh my, alright, well, let's shoot for the twenty-third and.
Twenty-third?
We'll go with it then.
Okay, five thirty still good?
Yep.
Just change the date, not the time? Okay.
I can't, but that's okay, go ahead and do it, I have a baseball.
Go ahead and do it.
Grandson.
Okay.
Game from grandson, I have.
Alright. Boy, we're batting a hundred on that.
Any old, old business? Any new business?
I've got a new business. I've been asked to see what you guys think about the possibility, we have a adult-based business regulations, which we don't look at a lot. And we've allowed it in industrial permitted by right. I was asked to see if you guys would be willing to look at doing everything as a conditional use. If it regards to an adult-based business, just make it conditional use. I think we only had it set for commercial as a conditional use, and then industrial areas as permitted use. But I've been asked to see what your palette is for putting it as conditional use in those three districts. The rest of it is not allowed in. I didn't have time to post it. You would consider it?
I agree.
Sure.
I'll probably put it as a public hearing for the next meeting, so that we can get that adopted, if you're okay with that.
Any more new business?
I was thinking there was something else, but oh, we did not. So at the last council meeting, there was some discussion about RV parking that we passed a couple of years ago. And so.
The off-street stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
One of the suggestions was to bring it back and maybe look at changing some of the language a little bit, to make it a little bit more clear. And I think we can come up with maybe a couple of suggestions.
We have the, the residents that raised the issue here, we want to have them come up. Just, they have suggestions, it's, they want the commission, the planning commission to consider.
That's fine.
Come on up.
I'm Donovan Ty, twenty-three twenty Cedar Berry Road. Next-door neighbors got a driveway cut to put in a lava rock driveway for their forty-two-foot-long, fourteen-foot-high RV that parks next to my bedroom windows and completely blocks our light and our view. And so we're just asking, it seemed when I read what you guys had done in twenty-twenty-three, that it was supposed to be on, on the side of their garage, in between two garages. He'd have to move a fence back, and I understand he's already had some expense doing the driveway cut, I get that. But there should be no way that they'd allow us to lose our light and our view for the sake of an RV. So we're just asking that you maybe look at the language and see if you can make it a little clearer. If, if not, my home is rendered devalued by half, because nobody wants to live next to that. It's, it's terrible, I, it's atrocious, I have pictures, you are welcome to ask me to see them. It's just, it shouldn't be done in a residential area like that, so. That's.
So I think part of the issue.
Thank you.
Sorry, I think part of the issue with the regulations is, it does say that they can park it in a side yard abutting a driveway. It does not clearly state abutting an existing driveway. So this individual, I, I don't think was trying to be, you know, out of whack, but created a driveway to park his RV on. So I think that's maybe where the clarification issue is.
I read into a little bit of it, and he's kind of swaying a little bit with hard surface with just rock, for one.
And that's the other thing too, that maybe we could look at that.
I don't know, somehow we need to have some sort of offsets to where they can't just slam it in between somebody's house, right? And there's not much offset anyway in some of the situations.
Well, we wouldn't allow somebody to run a driveway clear up to the lot line, would we?
Um, yeah, you can, so, so you're allowed, you're allowed, I think each lot, depending on the size of the lot, is allowed for a forty-foot-wide curb cut. You can do that twenty-foot here and twenty-foot here, so you could technically have two driveways on a lot. And that's kind of what he did, he had his one driveway where the garage was, and then created another driveway
On the other side.
On the other side, yeah. I don't know that that was the intention of the code. So I think we just need to kind of look at that.
Is this just to address coming off the street, or is it? Is this just to address coming off the street, or is it to address coming off and out?
I think this particular circumstance you're asking, I
It's off the street.
Yes.
I think it's
But what about, do you get into alley versus street?
Probably, I mean, I would think it would almost adhere to both, because you can't park in a public street during certain times, I wouldn't think you could park in a public alley during certain
Or off, what about off and out?
Yeah, would it be extended it all the way to the back alley and then parked it in?
And then you could do that, because you could
Be in his yard on that driveway he created that goes all the way to the alley.
Yeah, and you can park, yeah, the way the regulations say you can park in your rear yard. So that, if it was back far enough, would technically be in the rear yard. So, yeah, I think we can just look at it, so I'll bring that one back as more of a discussion, and maybe we'll have some suggestions. I'll bring the other one back as hopefully a public hearing, just to get that one done.
Yeah, I think we can just add in some of our proposed language for the, because I know city council members have even offered some suggestions, so we can have that next meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
The issue is, the, the location of the, of the trailer, Mo home, the, the location of that impedes, affects, darkens the neighbors.
Yep.
Okay, so I think the, maybe can we put in a registration that says that it, that it cannot block, impede, or block the, the, the windows of the adjacent residents?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the question here.
There has to be clearance or an offset
Clearance or something.
To something, yeah.
Okay, we'll look at it and
Think about, think that's
Any other new business?
I don't think I have anything.
If not, we're adjourned.